So what I share with folks is at least a...
Yeah, pardon, I'm not sure if you give any of this to the confessions and any council members.
Yeah, we're on project multi here. So what I want to share with folks now is at least kind of a jumping off point on a three-year model. I think one of the things I made tonight is there's a lot that can be done with the three-year budget. You can project future FT growth, enrollment growth, there's a lot of pieces in here. What I'm giving you tonight really is a three-year flat budget model that assumes a sense of staff yield. Today's a staff yield. We can go through a little bit. What makes it complicated is because you're in the middle of another budget, which is obviously 1819. I just took a rough 2.75% for salary increases for next year. Some of the numbers are not going to match to what you have in your budget books that are being presented. So I tried to roll flat numbers forward, kind of take health insurance, push that forward. So again, kind of just come to what it's kind of like a baseline view of things. And again, we can adapt this and change things around. So I think I'll just walk through and we'll talk about questions kind of as we go. So as I said, I took...
The starting point, your different point, the 1819 would be what you posed in?
No, because there's new FTs in there, it's going to get too murky. So I just thought, again, this is kind of what the point I was saying, we can adapt and change. What I did was I just took a very simple three-year out, which your current years, your adopted budget, you're working from now. I took, you'll see when I go through, 2.75% in salary, 8% in health, again, just to try to roll. Because I wanted to get a picture of what years two and three look like. There's really no way to project that well, because first of all, your year one health is in the low side. So then you're going to have to project out, you know, 4% for three years, it is kind of low. So again, let's spin through it and then at least I think we'll talk through more. Maybe there's other stuff you wanted to talk about, we'll come back again.
I'm going to base this on the concept of the superintendent's budget, not necessarily mending it to a lot of situations.
Yeah, but this is a basic...
As if we had no...
This is so you know a budget presented already. This is basis, a straight move forward three years. We're in a sense assuming you don't have a budget submitted to the mayor, all that stuff. This is a very flat, flat budget. So the budget, the three-year budget assumes flat enrollment growth, no additional staff. I made no retirement projection in there as well. Raises based on average, not settled contracts. All basic, it's done. Non-salaried health insurance accounts are held somewhat flat. We'll see some supply accounts when we get farther, try to hold those flat. And I think, not projecting our future, you know, pencil and pen growth and that kind of stuff. We know our budget, the world is instead of. So taking the salary accounts and again, doing kind of some simple multipliers on there. You have a 3.5, 3.56% increase in the 1819 budget based on a projection. Because we had to make an adjustment or change inside your grant structure for the first year. And board knows we had a ton of shifting of people around inside the budget. So your year one is going to look a little off. Your 1819 would be a 2.6, 2.68% increase and as well would be your 2021 budget. So those are your gross salary numbers. So roughly, again, about 2.2 million, 2.3 million growth in salary, which is again, pretty traditional move seen in growth. This year again is very, it's complicated because of some of the velocity grants that we've seen. That's why our raise line is so high in the current budget. Employee benefits, if you look at overall trend, I mean, trend inflation on health is about 8%. So I took that 8% number. Again, you know, 29 million, 5.7% increase really across the board. Because health gets complicated inside your health account of social security, which only grows about 2.5%. Your workers' comp is about a 2%, 3% growth. So it's all in on employee benefits, about 5.7%. And again, I can give you more detail, I can break this down by your couch trucks you have. Again, it's a question of, again, where finance wants to go with this exercise. Your service and fees projection, the bulk of your growth here will be your tutor line. So your 2.47% increase year one, 2.49 year two, and 2.5. It assumes no changes in staffing. Again, just that kind of roll it forward. Your contract raises are usually around 2.5 and 2.75 percent each year.
Is that a valid projection and no increase in special education?
It's not. And again, I, it's nice to say, I hate the term, but we can make FT projections going forward. I can build in the high school staffing for the next three years. There's a lot that can be done inside this. We've always tried to focus a lot of times on what is the, you know, I call it start the buses, turn the lights on, day one, September 1st. So what's going to cost us is at least keep the same shares we have. So that's, you're right, I mean, looking across Mr. Truett's...
Yeah, I would say we probably grow a couple of years every year, you know. And we really have, you know, really scaled back on how, you know, certainly checking schedules, making sure we're maximizing them. But I would say we're maybe three years or so we could be...
Yeah, I mean, what's, I meant, there's probably a traditional amount of special ed population that increase, whether 1% a year or whatever it is.
No, it's, again, that's, and that's something we can build into another projecting, this is kind of first...
That's something that's hard to predict, because we generally increase, I'd say, 3, 84. But, you know, we, the same week this year, I got two kids that moved in from district one, significant, they were able to move to another. We had hearing in parents that he needed a tutor to interpret. So sometimes that does, you know, but I would say on average, 3 to 4 a year has been a pretty good amount.
Your transportation and tutor account, you currently have a 3.5% contract increase in transportation. We did make, I did make a small assumption about like 1.5% growth in special ed tuition. So you do see about a 3.46% increase year one, 3.48, 3.5 going forward there. Again, as Kelly knows, your tuition rates, no matter what, like all things, their cost goes up. So they usually put a couple percentage points on, even if you keep the current that you have. We do have issues where we add students like this, and we have picked up some students along the way. So that's at least, again, a kind of this flat line look at those things. Supplies, I took kind of a small increase in electricity accounts. We've doubled, also 1.26, 1.31, and 1.29. Again, just keeping electric costs always go up a little bit. Although we've been good in mitigating ours, I gotta say, with increases in electricity and also health. So that's, that's inside supplies. So if you boil the whole thing down to the last page, just kind of where it all comes down to, the brass tacks. You've got a 3.84% increase in your operating budget of 4.9 million. That includes an 8% increase in health, which is, again, the borders are insignificantly below that. But again, I'm working out these trend data. 4.4% for year two and a 4.6%. So in a sense, your, your basic operating cost, you're coming back to your budget percentage of the mayor's, about 3.9, you know, million or so on an ongoing basis. So that, I guess I'm, I'm looking for feedback, you know.
When you read the numbers you had, come on your last page.
Yeah.
First, 1819, you've got 3.84.
3.84.
Right, you've got 3.35, 3.75. Now, the only wonder I have is, since this is the first time it's out of the box. We maintain that what makes Danbury unique, and based on our proposed, about $28 million, that we put this in our budget. When we proposed to the mayor, that's predicated on enrollment. And over the course of years, we have, it's constantly going up. So I think, even misleading, and I understand what you're trying to do, so I'm trying to make it my own mind.
No, it's...
I think it's misleading, in other words, I look at it from a business point of view, is that if I know I have an issue with a cost.
You've got a cost.
That that's a historical situation, you know, I may not be able to peg it, but I think I should give some credibility to it. In all its aspects, because here we are, as I said, touting that we need, we want to make, you know, we drive this year or next year to the public and the legislatures. And indicating that additional funding is needed, principally due to, oh, one of the items would be to enrollment, but we're not forecasting it. So I think that, to me, may be consideration to look at. The other thing is, when we put it in terms of numbers, again, I think we should also be fair. Because it's the number that reduces the budget, is the retirement. So I mean, we've got, you know, the startup, they were 10 years except that one time we had to buy back for the buyout.
What happens is some retirements just skew the numbers, because your current operating budget doesn't have $700,000. Because I typically do a negative entry, $700,000. And it does make, I could note it like on this page or as a back, because it skews the numbers. Because when you line up the budget document, current year, you have this weird $700,000 entry, doesn't exist in your current budget. So it gets, it gets...
If you're looking at match, you know...
Yeah, it doesn't line up well, basically.
If we just go around, I don't think I'm looking for a line by line match, which is crazy. I think somewhere down the road, if you look at it, I think what I'm trying to do here is conceptually try to put something together. Which demonstrates that, again, as chief operating officer, that we know this year we had X number of dollars. Next year, all things being considered, if we, you know, same levels, we have X plus Y and it goes up incrementally. And it just goes up, and the facts are, you know, what they are. So my inclination would be is to...
You'd like to see more of them.
Add the assumptions.
Okay, you'd like to see more of them.
Yeah, yeah, but these are driving, I think these costs are, in total in dollars, are driving numbers, so they're...
We know the high schools are going to probably take four or so, some of the FTs or five in a couple of years, we know that. Your portals at West Side, as you add those 50 students, you're going to add, it would be 2 for 6, 2 for 7, 2 for 8. So you could have some three-year FT growth there happening before you. There's clearly some drivers there that we definitely know. What's complicated is, I want to give this out, is it's hard, it's hard being between... It's hard... It's hard being in between a budget. In other words, if we had a budget that was approved, we hadn't presented and knew yet. It does make it unfortunate, kind of like two budget versions on the street, which is what was kind of complicated. At the same time, we've kind of talked about this for a long time.
Right, and it's over a little while further to your point. They don't have to, you know, this is a, the concept, they don't have to peg it and dot the i across the t's with the numbers. We can wait until, we get things finalized, a little bit more comfortable on numbers, and then go forward from there. All I'm just saying philosophically is, some of the cost drivers in there, I think should be represented. And I think it makes a fair, a fair statement.
No, it does, it definitely is, if you include those other costs and numbers. So I even waited, you know, we just targeted the salary, health insurance accounts, because obviously, no, those are the big drivers in the budget itself. It's roughly 75% of your cost, you know, on that level. Yeah, we could definitely put in more of an all-in, and, you know, maybe I could do a little more detail salaries and all that. It's, you know, average teacher salary, I think we settled that times about 2.88, that'd be the overall step and raise the whole deal. Because I think the second, third year or something like that.
What I'm trying to get at is looking at the snapshot, that doesn't, you know, year after year, we presented in the snapshot form. This is the budget this year. And historically, our budget, the total budget, has always increased over the past years. Because of certain factors that have added to it. So I think if you look at it in the big picture, you go three years down the road. What, on the third year off the, you know, hopefully, when you're making up the budget, you can say, okay, my actual budget now to my theoretical budget that I had planned is not too far off. You know, I mean, I can't forecast everything exactly, but the main cost drivers I have in there. So anybody looking at this is not going to scratch their head in 19 and 20 and 20 and 21, this is the holy smoke. You know, the board of ads coming up with $9 million, $11 million, $12 million, you know. That's what I'm trying to, to get to, is that, and it supports our, I think it supports our, our position is to, you know, why we need more funding.
The irony of that whole thing is that our alliance money, which is 8.3, 8.5 million, if any of it is returned to the town, I mean, to us or to the town. We are going to be in dire straits. Those, but that, those, the money there, recall, 51% of it has to go to close the achievement gap. And then the other, they're permitting us to build our programs that we have. It's not just happenstance that we can put anything in there. It's a written, there's a written application dealing directly with accountability targets. That money stops coming to us, and the only place you're going to get that is going to be from the town. And as I say, you're fully kindergarten, a lot of your programming work that we've added on, that we've been permitted to add on. Because people say, well, how do they get by in all these years? Well, we were able to write into the money, into these grants. So we're not getting from the town, okay, but we were getting from the lines. And the city's been great about making sure we got that money, they haven't been trying to take that money. But we've been using it for that purpose. And that's, that has been what's frightened me so much, and I, I was asleep at night when they were saying this year. Mois said, that grant is not moving forward, it's come to a sunset after five years. But they, they've had to reinstitute it. My worry is that could, that money, if it, for some reason, is cut severely, it's going to impact your three-year budget, unbeknownst anyone. So if I was doing that, do you assume that is a lot, nine, eight and a half million dollar liability? If it's not funded, I worry about that.
Some, some districts have taken the view, your priority district grant, which is about, was when I got here, about 2.4 million. Now today sits at about 1,007. Every year, the state has kind of dinged off 10% of the time. We're hearing now the whole, the cuts that are getting announced on Thursday, priorities are going to be cut by a million across the 20 priority school districts. So you're going to lose, give or take, their 50, 75,000, however they calculated it through the minutes. Norwalk, for example, took the view the priority grant's going to go away. So they've actually built that into their budgeting models. We can absorb 1,005 right now out of how they are. So I think there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of pieces in that, to Sal's plan. At one point, we talked about a transition off Alliance. Well, I see your take, back then Alliance was 1,007. I mean, I, I have no way to transition you guys, and since to leave the Alliance grant is like a nice to have stuff. I mean, there's just, there's just no way. I mean, those, that's your kindergarten, I mean, that's, that right now is a heart of your district right now, where that money sits.
I think, I think to your point, you know, I mean, we can build a doosy, you know, a scenario of budget two, where we're saying, if we didn't have the Alliance, you know, transition to it. Then, like you often said, you might as well just close the lights and walk away. But I, I think to your point's well taken, in this case here, and the assumption can be, you know, again, conversationally here. Assumption can, again, it goes part of the known cost, the theoretically known cost run is as to what if? If we're experiencing a degradation in the Alliance money of X number of dollars, then, you know, build that, when, build that into, into here and say, okay. Whatever that X number of dollars is, 500,000, 700,000, and build it in here, at least we're accounting for that. We're not saying that we're building a budget based on the Alliance being zero, because, I mean, that's crazy.
So you want to add in a forecast of the degradation of those grants?
Yeah, I think if you have known factors that you're fairly comfortable with, if the...
I mean, I view in five years, the priority grant will go. I mean, I just, I just think in time, you're going to unfortunately phase that away a little bit at times.
Are there some of the, like Norwalk, you said they're phasing some of the stuff out, but they're, are they experiencing population decrease too?
Norwalk is seeing flat to some, I haven't followed Norwalk as closely.
Stanford's drawn Norwalk, I'm not sure of.
I mean, it's a lot easier if you're losing population than...
They also have a different tax base than you do, I mean, clearly, Norwalk has, they're also net per pupil, it's probably about 70 at Cedar South in the state ranks. So I think a lot of districts have taken the idea of some of the Alliance money, you know, Stanford did. They put like after-school programs in there, I don't want to call it a nice to have, it's a nice to have stuff. Where in a sense, here, because of funding, we have literally made that, that, those, that's the grease in the wheels. I mean, you know, as I said, kind of said, basically, I think just about every single one of your kindergarten teachers now sits inside your Alliance district grant. We've shifted that much stuff around, again, to make the budget work and not go through catastrophic cuts.
Is this, is this salary and benefits projection based upon having the same amount of teachers through this?
Same amount of teachers.
So if we do need to put more full-time teachers on because of population?
Correct.
These are going to, like you said, these are going to slow down.
You know, to make it more, I mean, I use the 8% number for health, which clears about $2 million or so, an increase that drives up the amount. But again, your 3.7% issue was, was an anomaly low year, I mean, that's a lower number. So it's...
That would be my opinion, and, you know, respecting Sal's conversation here, the trend of the money. I don't want to be here in five years, if I forbid that, we lose that Alliance money, you know, I'd be shorter than what I am, you know, now. And in terms of trying to deal with that, that situation. But if the, the trend is, the Alliance will be taken away, then we should build in here certain, you know, adjustments for it, if possible.
Yeah, I guess I, I want to be mindful that, one of the things I've always, I guess in my own mind, to be very honest with this. I've always been mindful of coming out with some of those where it winds up, board seeks $15 million in the next three years. I'm always mindful, like, it's a big numbers. Because I could easily, you know, fill a transition plan for $2 million, gets picked up every year into the Alliance, you're going to have a budget number that's going to be, you know, that's...
My feeling is, you don't stick your head in the sand.
No, no.
You know, I mean, he's got to run, he's going to be here for a number of years, he's got to run this district for a number of years. I'm sure in the back of his mind, he understands all that we're talking about. And, and, and it's not used for publicity, it's not to say the board needs that. But I think it gives us, it gives board, it gives board members an idea as to what direction we're, we're going in. And I think it also supports our position.
Would it be moved to take this on a two-pronged, in other words, have really like a staffing exhibit? Not necessarily costing it, but kind of just where we see some future growth. I mean, high school is very clear on where we're going there. I think we have a good idea, obviously, at West Side, we've got some good information, as Kelly said, with some of the stud numbers. So I mean, maybe kind of take this two ways, have a three-year forecasting model for some of your actual staffing growth that you're going to be here and foresee.
That's a quick question too. I, I've never even thought of it. Is there, is there a, a projection on normal growth? Is it normally, most of our growth occurs in elementary schools, or, and then that bubble follows through? Or do we get kind of an even growth throughout all grades?
You've got a spill-up effect happening now. Your, your current K5 is just around 900 or so. Your 612 were in the eights, like low eights or so, you're starting to see the spill-up. And then you've got, the problem is your new high watermark, you're not growing, you're staying high. So you're like 800, 825.
There's no book.
Yeah, there's, there's...
I could follow through.
Yeah, right.
It's gone like this and it's staying like that, is what's happening to us. So the classes that, you know, as Joe said, that had 650s are now 900.
So I mean, you know, you take the high school, you can get in years from now, 900 a grade, you could be 3,600 up there.
Which was the projection.
Yeah, which is, which is where we look at the middle schools.
And are we seeing more continual growth down underneath in the, in the elementaries? Is that where, you know, more people are moving in with younger kids?
I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing us piercing over that like 925 number. I haven't seen any upward ticks there, I could actually peek just on Power School quick. I haven't seen any big, big growth there, at least getting high.
While you're doing that, I don't want to tie up the next meeting.
Yeah.
I just quickly to close, in some way, I wanted to ask the opinions of the committee member, and then just quickly, for the other two board members that are here, if you can just...
No, that's fine. I mean, mainly the main reason why I'm interested in this three-year budget is, you know, to look at kind of three objectives and just forecast that down the road. I mean, obviously, we're dealing with enrollment growth in the district, it's something that a lot of other districts aren't dealing with. And I think, you know, a part of this, this three-year budget is to, you know, forecast the enrollment growth, you know, as best as we can. And the costs associated that, you know, associated with that. The other part, another objective I have is that, that we look at, you know, new programs, additions in the district. And we, you know, we implement that into a three-year budget, because, you know, if we wanted to, I know there's some of these intervention programs that we've been utilizing. We've had to cut back at times, and, you know, obviously, there's, there's a lot more intervention that we would like to do in the elementary school. It's our intention to roll that out, you know, more than we currently have. You know, we need to kind of set, you know, set some sort of expectations as to how we're going to do that. Because we can't, you know, turn to the city or to the state, you know, next, you know, in one year and be like, all right, well, we need an additional $5 million for this program, and then they go, good luck.
Almost like a three-year working capital plan, but for staff, basically.
For staff, for program, whatever it might be. So I mean, and then also for the addition, I mean, we built this new addition at Danbury High School. I mean, we're trying to incorporate that into our budget, but, you know, it's tough sometimes, people, it's tough for them to wrap their heads around, you know, we put in West Side and we rolled out that program. We're going to put the modulars at West Side, hopefully. You know, and rolling out that program, people need to understand and be prepared, you know, for, for what's on the horizon. So I mean, I know that's part of enrollment growth, but that's also part of, you know, new programs, including the intervention programs. You know, forever planning and going to full one-to-one, right?
Yeah.
In terms of technology, you know, we need to be able to implement that according to a plan, rather than showing up one day and saying, hey, this is what we need. And then the last thing is, you know, we really need to figure out what inadequate funding target would be for our district. And we need to plan for that accordingly, because every year, we're getting less and less money. So then when we propose this budget to the city, and when we're looking for money at the state level, you know, this gap keeps getting larger and larger. And so people look at us like we're crazier and crazier, when in all reality, it's, you know, this is where we're at, this is what we need. You know, just because you gave us less money one year, doesn't change the fact that, that we need more than we've been given. So those are kind of the three objectives I'm really looking for in terms of a long-term budget, is incorporating those. And I know it makes your life very difficult, but it's...
No, it, no, it doesn't, frankly, because I sat at my desk when I was doing this, because, no, a direction's not a bad thing. And I think having a three-year model for at least some of this futuristic staff pieces is not a bad thing. That in front of the board is, you know, just a regular item in a sense. Yeah, we could, I could definitely reprice this in more detail, and we could then build in, do we some of the DHS enrollment there, the West Side staffing. You know, I could take a little more, yeah, we could definitely do, I'll, I'll, I'll try to find a way to get the retirement numbers, at least it looks a little more, it balances in there.
My only suggestion was exactly what Fred said. Try to build in a bit more of the, the growth numbers and, and like you just mentioned, some of the projections of the retirement cost.
I mean, it's hard, because, you know, we've been in survival, I mean, that's the, you know, that's the, that's the challenge that the board faces every year. I mean, I think that's, you know, Cisco.
But I appreciate you doing this.
Then Joe, you have to put in the givens, and I think, as, as Dave was, given that we have continued access to the Alliance money, all those, those givens need to be out there. So we could speak to them and not incorporate it into the anticipated costs. Let people know we're relying on it.
In my mind, I'm going to do the staffing pieces as a one-sheet table, as a table diagram on what, where folks are going as far as growth and program. I think that's an easy, Mrs. Cooper.
I agree with Fred and I agree with Mr. Vought, and since I've been on the board, we've always looked at a value. So this way, we can look at three years from here and get some, at least some type of idea of where we're going, what we're going to be needing in the next three years, whether we be here or not. So, you know, it's not going to hurt us to look at the numbers and see where we're going, because we know the city is not going to give us what we asked them for.
Rachel? Okay, this is a great starting point, you know, and I think...
I never say we're draft on things, but I'm going to say enough time, it's, it really is a...
If you want to go ahead and get too involved in the numbers, you know, I think what's necessary is a dialogue, you want a brainstorming session, I don't care myself. You know, if you have another, you know, finance committee, just as a brainstorm session, to put things down and do a whole lot of what-if, where maybe not so much press for time. It might be good, rather than send you off, the lesson when I do with your workload, is to send you off in 100 different directions. So if we can have a conversation and nail down certain things, then I think that would be a good starting point. So, you know, if that's acceptable, we can hold another dialogue for a brainstorm session, a brainstorm session. For another run before he starts putting, you know, pen to paper, okay? All right, I thank everybody for taking some food, ask for, I guess I need about two, two, a pause meeting to, to end. Second, okay, so, meeting's adjourned. Yeah, I did, I had a...
Hopefully, this session should be able to...
Yeah, you guys want to come and do the stand around the table? Yeah, you guys want to talk and do the hand around the table, do we have a dialogue?
Do you want to bite?
Fred, there you go.
Fill in the seats.
You just sit.
I'm here, don't. You guys can fill in the seats. Turn the party around. Yeah, let me do that square. Yeah. Really good set. It's all the event. Sorry, just kidding. Oh, yeah, no, it's all, I don't want to get help.
Lisa, what do you own is my main issue.
Wow, we're here. 20 bucks a seat. We're going to close that budget gap. Yeah. And then are we, are we, are we, are we done on the, no, this is. I mean, I'm sure the meeting is, I did a very light PowerPoint, if you want to share that, I mean, yeah, I mean, we'll just open the meeting, Joe, and kind of hand it to you, and then we can decide to discuss, I think.
Just disclosure, we were going to have this tape tonight, and no one was available, but our media folks got here, and they, that camera's on, live, all the time, and they're going to take it, so I'm just letting you know. The groups there want to come alongside, if you, okay, you're good up there.
I don't want to say thanks.
I don't know if Rachel, if you want to, you're going to take me on a little? Yeah. Right, just a workshop, we need to have a, because we want to have.
People usually have a ten.
Okay. All right. How did even up there, and so we're running in the meeting, we're calling?
Yeah, we go, it's, it's very, the board's working, all the Q and As are in the universe.
Okay. All right, so we'll call the, call the meeting to order at 6:10. And this is going to be a workshop with the council members, and Joe Marcano's going to give us some numbers, and I think we're just going to try and get a dialogue. Mr. Jannelli gave me some ideas from what his thoughts were on this, that we just want to look at the the budget and get some back and forth with you guys. And did you want to do your PowerPoint off the bat?
I mean, I, just for the council, first to thank guys for coming tonight, appreciate it, you know, it's, you know, another night. I did a kind of light PowerPoint, you know, you guys know where we sit, I think, because the council's kind of aware of some of the enrollment growth issues, but I think we'll just do kind of a quick, just kind of very high level on things. Obviously, our mission and belief statements, we know kids are our first priority, that we do, we have high expectations for all students and accountability. I reminisce, as the council knows, too, from being on the city side, that the state budget concerns are ongoing and feel like never-ending. We've seen our shortcuts even during mid-year and mid-session. We've got the Alliance teacher grant for 250,000, our priority grant for 350,000, these are all after the budget's been adopted. And again, the city's sharing their own, what I call, mid-year rescissions. Our teacher mentoring grant, which is $40,000, but that's, that was an unfunded mandate the state handed down to us, so it's $500 per teacher for teacher training, the state said, we're not going to give you the money, but you still have to run the program and still pay the teachers, so that's an unfunded thing that comes back to us. And we just learned now that our priority grants can be reduced by another 100,000, or a magnet by another 150,000. The only, one of the bright spots is we do see some increase in state aid from from the state. It's a little murky on what, the governor's budget had 975,000 in its two-year budget, there is about a million and a half, at least in one version, but, I mean, as even the council knows, there's about 30 different versions that come up between now and then. Budget cost containment, we on the board side have done quite a big effort in a lot of areas, obviously, bigger costs of special ed, we've done a lot of low incident special ed, school-based programs there to try to reduce costs, keep kids in district and not pay a large out-of-district placement cost, at times an out-of-district place can be $150,000. Therefore, we've done, you know, some building-based programs that we can put additional students in, it can curb some of that cost. We've looked at ways to reallocate some of our substitute teacher dollars to better impact construction. Our transportation system, we switched an all-propane fleet there, it's now in our second year of that phase in, so we'll all propane in this next budget. Our lighting and heating upgrades, which the city's taken part in as well, has been a big thing. Our consolidation of purchases, purchasing, and obviously our advocacy of the state, Dr. Sal and I are heading up, and Rachel tomorrow to testify up in Hartsford on behalf of the state budget. Our enrollment trends, again, not a new graph, Danbury, good and bad news is we're bucking the trend, I mean, we really are, we are, we are seeing a large, large number of growth in Danbury, our trend continues to move up, where most of the state and our surrounding schools are declining. This is kind of a snapshot that we did this year, which shows your current enrollment from 2001 to 2017, I mean, just an amazing, I mean, if you're a statistician, I mean, the growth here is just, it's incredible, where other districts are really inverting this curve, I mean, to think of your, like, 9,500 students in '20, then in 2002, you now sit 11,450 today, is just amazing to me. Your enrollment growth, this is again, we did a study with McMonahan-McGrum a couple of years ago, again, we are still outpacing a lot of the demographers' data, and we do continue to see that on all fronts, where we're, our current projection was supposed to be 11, 11,373, and we're, as you saw in the last graph, we're already headed that. Our subgroups, I mean, this is obviously our population demographic, I mean, obviously, we do show growth in our English language learners, our special ed population somewhat, and also our free-reduced lunch numbers are 58%. You know, those, those aren't the only cost drivers, but obviously, they do add to cost inside the district. And then, just kind of quickly, before we open it up for, you know, figure discussion, just to kind of, again, broad brush as far as some of our needs, again, no secrets of the council folks, you know, the vision of the high school, we're looking at approximately five new FTEs there, new custodians, clean new wing, about is three FTEs there. The current district number for custodian square foot is in high school is like 40,000 square feet a man, the industry standard's 18,000, so we are, there's no way we could deal with the addition in the existing staff, the new addition is 60,000 square feet alone, so even if we use that number with the three, we're still, you know, we're going to be well above the industry standard there. The portable classrooms, we do have two additional FTEs there for the new addition at West Side. Continued growth in our special education area, police speech and language, we do see high caseload numbers there, we're looking for drug and alcohol specialists to service our higher need students, restoring our math and literacy coaches, and our paraprofessionals to a cut of last year's budget. Health insurance, obviously, I'll continue to highlight this, I mean, the overall health is 3.5% on renewal, we partnered, probably like five years ago now, with the city on health insurance, and I'll say it's the greatest thing we've ever done as far as controlling costs, 3.5%, my first year, we're 18% on renewal, so I mean, that's been phenomenal. So just a million dollars, and still a million, not not zero, but it's far better than it was. So again, kind of just a broad brush, so total budget increase ask is 6.9 million, the operational increase, kind of the base budget, as I thought, is 4.3, and the enrollment growth issues is 2.6 overall. I guess I'll kick it back to the chair and open up for questions and dialogue.
Well, thank you guys so much for coming, and that's, you know, that's basically our stuff in a nutshell, we know that with, you know, obviously, as much as we'd love to sit back and ask you guys to fill in all the gaps that we're lacking from the state and everything else, these are basically the the numbers, I mean, they're, they're not, without, that's without, we're keeping the staff that we've lost and losing more staff down the road, we're, we have issues. And I wanted to see what, what any of you guys thought of that, thought of these numbers, thank you for the rollout, too, Joe, so, but that's pretty much the picture, it's not like anything is coming in super for us.
Yes, sir.
11,451 in 2017.
Yeah.
What for 18 and 19?
We've been growing on average about a percent to a percent and a half a year, so we add roughly about 150 students every year, and that's been a pretty constant trend. We've already grown 200, but I mean, it's, it's been steady, steady growth, I mean, the city's got some development going on, we do see growth coming from the West Side, the exit two corridor over there, definitely there's some coming in there, you know.
You're talking about the new town, I almost answered to you.
Yeah, I want to say that's Old Ridge Road over on that side, we've seen some increase there, we actually had a bus up there from high school, so we do see, see growth coming from that pocket of the city.
We had to add another bus there, too.
Yeah, we see growth in the downtown, some, Elsworth Avenue School, for example, was built originally for about 350, they're about 4, 480 right now, and we've, we've combined spaces, you know, split up classrooms, we've done, I mean, the city thankfully gives 18 classrooms, four, five years ago, we've probably split and divided probably another 20, I would say, inside, at the elementary tier alone. Your, your, your middle schools now are growing back again, they're pushing back, projection going back to 1,000, and that was kind of a, you know, ugly number, no one knew, which is why we've looked at the portables of the West Side, as at least a decent economical option to do up there.
That's bullshit.
Each, right now, the continued trend is the middle schools will get, so you'll be 1,000 each, and probably another 700 or so at West Side, so the goal is to try to at least alleviate some of those numbers to get them probably to 950 or 925 or so.
That was, that was the the projection, too, with the six or eight portables at West Side, was to, if we got eight portables there and get state funding for it and everything else, that's a big number, at least a minimum of 60, we're hoping for at least 16, 16, 13% reversal, eight units there would be about 200 students, that would be kind of channeled away from the overpopulation at Broadview and Rogers Park, trying to keep us under the 1,000 number there.
Yeah, I'm interested in the, what the averages of number of students per classroom, because, you know, you get the total numbers, but how has this affected?
It does very well, but it's.
Stay within the guidelines that.
No, we've had, in some cases, exceed the guidelines, in other cases, you know, it could be below it, but, you know, reduce faculty and staff, what you're seeing is, the only place that we can do anything about it is to increase numbers in the classroom. You know, we can't go sell some other widgets, right, you know that, so we just increased the number of kids in the classroom. We have some that are 26, 27, we have some that are 22, there's a few schools that might happen, of course, situations 19, because the classroom is smaller, that we had to put kids in, which bubbles out the rest. So, but in general, I would say our our numbers are higher than we like them to be, and we have those guidelines, and we can't follow them all the time at all. The impact, I think the board's beginning to get some emails from parents about the high school keeping, you know, our high school's comprehensive, and everybody loves the ability to take any course that you want, but at some point, you know, you can't offer them every year, and we're having that that problem at certain levels, and we may have to reduce it because there are programs that we can't continue, or have to offer them on a, you know, an alternate year basis or something. So those are the things that were, ways that we need to get around, when, what gets me all the time is, and you're part of, you know, we go and ask money, we don't get it, and you say, well, how are you doing it? Well, a lot of them are doing it on the backs of the teachers, in terms of what they contribute. Increased class sizes, and what's happening now with sped, as you know, we're increasing now the kids that are needing support, because they can't get it in the classroom, we're having, we're seeing an increase in referral rates, because that's where kids can get some some added help, so, you know, all of that is coming to bear now, in terms of our lack of resources.
Mr. Jannelli. You know, a couple or three times, speaking to the issue of enrollment, a couple or three times during the course of the year, Danbury gets some very favorable publicity as to, you know, a great place to live, so, you know, I often wonder how much this, you know, adds to people, you know, waking up and saying, let me move to to Danbury, just in the last two weeks, I think there was an article that came out that indicated that Danbury is the best city in the state of Connecticut to live, also, it's most expensive, but, you know, this is great publicity, it's not saying it's the worst in the high crime ridden, but, you know, I I wonder what this positive publicity is going to add to the the growth, so, it's good for us to have the publicity, but sometimes that that movement drives people here, and also relative to other areas, it's affordable to live, and you know, has a cost impact on on us coming in to educate the kids that are coming in here. So it's nice that the city's done a great job in in making it a safe and a wonderful city to live, the costs associated with with that.
Just to kind of shoot off of what you're saying, we're sort of victims of our own success, and that comes out when you talk about how much money you spend per student, since they froze the ECS money, what happens is the surrounding communities who have a declining population are still getting the same amount of money, which raises the amount of money that they appear to get, which they do, and Danbury with an expanding population, getting the same ECS money drives that amount of money down.
Sure does.
So the $2 million that you talked about, Joe, as far as ECS, it comes out between adult education and ECS, the $2 million is really nowhere near the amount of money that we need.
Should we forward, I mean, your your fair share should be 40 million, I mean, I think we all know that.
Yeah.
And on the city side, we're short probably 2 and 1/2, 3 million dollars down.
Well aware, current year.
To supplement a growing population in the school, so our, our job is to balance that out, and to figure out what we can, we've always had good working relationship with with board and with its administration as well, and that's what we have to do now is try to figure out how we can do more with less because of the state condition, and when you compare it against some of the other communities, I was looking on that scale of how much actually taxpayers in Danbury support local education versus some of the surrounding communities. We support, coming from the tax base, about 80% of the school board's budget, whereas surrounding communities are averaging about 50%, so that puts the additional burden on us.
It helps us.
We're here, out there to listen and find out, we'll work through it and try to do the best we can.
Yes, one of the things that we're, sorry.
Our argument, and we met with the legislators last week, and that's been Mark's kind of position, and we all agree with it, there's about four cities, maybe five, that are growing, that if the state as a whole doesn't have the wherewithal to solve all of its ills, that it focus particularly on the schools, districts that are growing with a needy population, and maybe, you know, explicitly cut out grants and whatever for those schools to assist with the local tax situation, because you're right, 80 cents on the dollars being raised by our own people because we're getting less from 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 the state. And and Stanford and Bridgeport, New Haven, one of experiencing the same thing, so that's what we're going to testify about, in terms of, you know, focusing that, but the fact still remains that these kids are coming in the doors, and class sizes are, you know, almost that they're zenith in a lot of ways. The identification of kids are much needed with a free-reduced population, that some schools are at 90%, our average is now 53%, and that is, that is taking, those are our kids, Danveryans, that need that assistance, so find that sweet spot, and I, and we've talked with the city, there's excess cost that comes to the city with unknown special ed that in the past, they've helped us with, and that's a good thing in terms of unanticipated expenditures, so that's a way of getting some of it. I think we can look at the insurance model that we have, that we've had some good experiences to allow us to be more flexible in the amounts, knowing that we may have to do some draw, but I think it is a collaboration of saying, okay, we may have to, we know what the business is, we may have to do it a little bit differently in order to move ahead, and that's where, unless the city delivers everything, I mean, the city, the state steps up, and they go to surrounding towns and, you know, do this while they increase some others that are that are needing, and that was the governor's plan this year, you saw that.
Right.
That went nowhere, Mark's idea is just, let's focus on a small group to see if we can engender more resources, so that's sort of what we're looking at.
Yeah, it's, I, I went through that list, and I took similar communities as us, and they're getting, they're frozen, their population is dropping, but they're frozen to their ECS money, and they're doing great, so we can't get their votes, sir, to support that.
That's the problem, you know, legislatures, we've got a lot more towns losing population that don't want to give up the money than, they got a lot of votes. I was going to reiterate before. I was going to reiterate before, when Joe said forty million dollars, that we're short, when we ran those numbers, basically forty million still leaves us almost five million dollars short of hitting the mid-mark, fifty, the fifty percentile mark. I mean, we're, that's how far below, if we got forty-four, forty-five million, we'd only be at the halfway point in state, you know, in funding for the schools, so it's, it's just, we're so far behind, it's unbelievable.
I, I still refer back, I know it's a, it's a hot button issue, but some of that cost could be, perhaps you could look into distance learning and expand on that, where it's less bricks and mortar and it's less teachers as well, labor-wise. There was also, on the city side, we, as you know, the blown Shapiro report in two thousand fifteen outlined several areas where IT, personnel, things of that nature, where perhaps we could share, instead of duplicating, having redundant services, we could look into savings, because in the long term, the state of Connecticut is not getting better overnight, it can get worse, bad overnight, and they're not going to get better overnight, so we have to make some long-term plans as to how we're going to make up that delta, and year to year it gets more.
Well, let's live with that for a second, because I was intimately involved in that conversation, and we looked at the technology, and what did we find, if they would support us in terms of the numbers, because, you know, it made sense to us, and we started drilling down.
One, we have a unionized, fully unionized IT department, and two, we're, we're grossly understaffed in our department. I think we haven't looked like, custodians looked at, and same thing, we're grossly understaffed and outside we have to add, we haven't looked at lightly, but I mean, that's at least where those, a lot of that data.
Yeah, we didn't see a symbiotic relationship there that would pay off for both of us. And, and, but with that said, there's times they work together, they do training, we, we share things whenever we can, that's been a good relationship. Personnel, if you look at our personnel department, it's, she's also a lawyer, and I know they work with your department, and they drill down, they negotiate, they do things together. So I think we've, you know, we've found some common areas where it made some sense, purchasing and things like that, as best we can, I, you know, I, I didn't see a lot in the Shapiro work that I can really say to you, look, you know, and say, you know what, we can operationalize something meaningfully, other than to say we're doing something, I just didn't see anything that came out of it at that time.
Well, I think, yeah, we, we paid for that difficult.
No, they sat down with us and we went, we went all in serious with them, and we talked about things that we can and couldn't do, and we came up with ideas of working together and bidding together and, and work with the town, but that, those are the kinds of things that we came in. The trouble is, you have a district that's, that's going like this, and, and, and support going like this, and a town that's going like this, and an infrastructure that's going up as well without support, so you put the two together, they commiserate, there's not enough, there's just not enough to do it.
Our, we rely on the grant list, I mean, we can, we can't put the bear, the, the load on the taxpayers anymore when they're carrying it to be loaded as it is, and it comes kind of.
Is the grant list going up this year, or where is it?
Well, we're looking at.
Going through.
Rebound.
Yeah.
Reval, yeah.
Revalue probably as normal expect.
Yeah.
You know, you're gonna, it's gonna go, you know, it's an opportunity to reshuffle the debt. But, but the rest of it, as far as new construction, new things, that's the only money we have, the, the city is getting hit pretty hard by the state, we're losing millions, and the only place that we have any kind of flexibility is whatever we can get in the way of the grant list, and, and that's, the cover is bare after that, so.
So just in, in regards to, you know, one of your points, distance learning, and I think that's a, a very good idea, and, you know, clearly there's no way to replace, you know, teachers and what teachers mean for their students, so it wouldn't be necessarily, you know, trying to supplant like their support and what they're bringing to the table, but even for something like distance learning, implementing something like that, you have districts across the state that are shifting over to, you know, full one-to-one, meaning every student has like their own laptop or their own iPad, to be able to, you know, do some of these things and to help the teachers, you know, do, you know, help the teachers, you know, teach the students and move to mastery-based learning, things like that, but even with something like that, it requires an investment in technology for these students, and so, you know, maybe in the long run, there are cost savings and something like that, I mean, I'm sure there are, but in the short run, we need an investment in that sort of technology in order to accomplish those things, so that's, that's another problem that we have, it's, you know, we've been cutting back, you know, and I haven't been here all that long, we've been cutting back in so many different aspects of, you know, student learning, increasing population sizes in the classrooms and all that, that it's, it's become tough to make the gains that we need to, and maybe to find, you know, new opportunities for cost savings, because, you know, students and teachers and administrators are already operating at a bare minimum, so there's no way to kind of accomplish some of those things. But I like that idea, though, and I think it's a very valid.
Well, it doesn't, it, it's not a case in business learning, as I said, it's not one true truth, it's all, and I still believe in interfacing people, but some of the higher grades in the high school where they're in their senior year and maybe taking a AP Thoracic or something like that, they could be going three days a week and using the rest of it on the computer. They're doing it in many states and have been doing it, and most people today, a lot of average families can't afford the cost of college any longer, and they're doing it at home, okay, they're doing it, distance learning. So it's, it's something that takes long-term planning, and it's, it's going to be an expense to introduce, but in the long term, it's going to save money, and you can't keep on building buildings and supporting the tax base the way it is, this doesn't happen, so look at the others, and with an open mind, and you have to sometimes say, well, that didn't work before, and we, we see objections to it, but let's take a little closer look and see if we can't offset some of our costs.
Absolutely. I think, I think one of the things that some people brought up, too, is it's nice to get, you know, west side's got some very nice technology and things like that, and, but sometimes when you look at having a fifty-eight percent, you know, population on free and reduced lunch, and try and figure out how to implement people to work off, you know, computers if they don't have them, you know, a lot of the kids come to school and get supplied with computers at school, but they don't bring them, they don't get to bring them home, so sometimes, I think like Fred brought up there, too, it's the, the initial implementation, we just don't have the funds to, to start up a lot of these things, you know, at, at this point.
Mr. Generali.
And to the members of the council, certainly we appreciate you being here, but the purpose here was not to bore you with a budget presentation with a whole bunch of numbers, because, you know, we've done that, we have a time that we're going to do that. The thing was to have engaged, it was a dialogue, just as we're doing now, because that's what happens, is if you have a dialogue and you have different opinions, something may come out of that, and bring this closer together in terms of forming a relationship as to a common interest to have solved a particular problem. The, the basic fact is, is as it, as it is and probably as it will be, the city of Danbury cannot afford to fund the education, for the cost of the education, we're not looking for the residents to foot that burden, that's, that's horrendous. And, and to my colleague Fred there, who made a very valid point, in that the budget that we proposed is not a budget that moves us ahead, it's what we refer to as a maintenance budget, it doesn't include any new sophisticated curriculums or programs. We understand that because we don't want to, to add insult to injury in terms of these particular costs, so maybe in a, in a multi-year budget, that may be part of the cost that will associate in there, but that's a subject for a different, a different time. What I think very strongly is that we have to do with the understanding that the council people understand some of the drivers and the issues that are creating the cost for us, and later on, the dollars that are associated with that, we have to unite and get the city of Danbury and all the stakeholders, that is the legislative, the officials, students, and everybody else that's a stakeholder in this city, to go to Hartford, because that's the only place where we're going to make up this differential. You know, as we keep talking about, we have this, you know, we're, we're lucky to have this position, you know, we have this one hundred and sixty-ninth, we're the lowest a couple of years ago, we were one hundred and sixty-seven or one hundred and sixty-three, and a twelve thousand, seven hundred dollar average cost versus the first city that was up there with the thirty-six thousand, it is totally disproportionate, insane, but Danbury, we know Danbury is getting short-changed, so we as a city of ninety thousand people have to be educated as to what these issues are, and then have to, you know, in a methodical and organized fashion, utilizing the abilities of the lobbyists, the point is in the right, the right direction, is to make our case in, in Hartford. And that's basically, you know, when I asked Joe to do this presentation, you know, I asked him, don't put numbers in here, because I think the dialogue is, as Warren was saying and some other people were saying, in, in terms of different approaches that we could do or concepts that we could, that we could utilize, brings us together a little bit more as a, as a relationship, but ultimately, the problem has to be solved by us going to Hartford, because we've been down this road before, down, last year, you know, we're saying the same thing, Warren is, you know, years, I mean, every year we have the, the presentation through budget, Warren's always, he makes reference to the grant list, so we understand that, and we're saying that we need more money, but it has to stop sometime, and we have to make a case where we all make that case to Hartford and say, look, however it works, we know, not, I shouldn't say we know, it's unlikely that that ECS formula is going to be changed, it's unfortunate that we lost the CGF case, however, it still doesn't stop us from going and making our case, and literally demanding more money, and we have the issues and the reasons why, we can show why we need more money, not that we're there with a plate in our hand like they're going around the church and say, you know, make a contradiction, but we have driving forces that need us, that, that demand that we, we fund our kids and they're not short-changed for education, so that's basically the purpose of this, is to get together as a city, you know, and understand our plight and our problems, you know, the city has its problems too, as Warren was saying, that they're getting short-changed, we shouldn't be short-changed. I'm not concerned about some other city or some other community, that may be a problem or unfair statement, but I live in Danbury, and I think Danbury for too long of a period of time has been short-changed, and only by us all getting together, or I, I truly feel is that we will make a case. We may not make it this year, we may not make it next year, next year, but I think over a period of time, we may make some inroad, will be able to, to mitigate this particular differential, gap, and take some of the burden off the city. I mean, that's essentially what I thought, you know, is, is, is an idea that I have or a philosophy that I have, and it was, you know, one of the reasons that we wanted a conversation, it's, I think it's easier to do it this way than it was in a formal budget presentation where we go before the council. So constructive ideas are, are good, it may be that we have tunnel vision, in, in terms of sometimes you're, you know, you're working on, on a project and you're only looking at it, and somebody else says something because they look at it through a different lens, and you say, gee, you know, that's a possibility, so.
Come on in, Mr. Fox.
Yeah, just, just to piggyback off of what Mr. Generali is saying, I think, you know, several people have come to me over the past several months, years, that, you know, what can we do to, to resolve this, again, it's a state, it's mostly a state funding issue, we're really being short-changed, not just for education, but, but all around on the part of the state, and, you know, the answer, I come back to people, and that's, that's really the primary thing we need to work on in this room, because we, as community leaders, need to foster this, is, is a real lack of grassroots support or grassroots, you know, Mr. John makes a good point, we need to go to Hartford and make our case, but if there's ten of us on a bus to Hartford, that's not going to stop anything, you know, we need hundreds or thousands of people to say, we can't keep this situation going anymore, we need to be properly funded, and it's only with a, a group of that magnitude that anything, anybody's going to listen, and I think to get that support, it's up to the people in this room, you know, it's the leaders of the city, to, to try and stoke that support. A lot of it's perception on, on the part of the people, and I was here ten years ago on this side of the table, and the only time people came out was when you're going to cut freshman sports, you're going to cut French, you're going to cut the gifted program, et cetera, et cetera, this room was full, the city council chamber was full, everybody was full, and the papers, and we added paper, that, that was the story, because my program is cut, everyone's out. Now we're talking about, well, you know, my kid's not getting the math coaching he needs, or my class size is thirty instead of twenty, so I get less attention, the average parent is not engaged in that discussion, while it may be, it might, maybe nice to have, really isn't, it's not affecting me directly, even though it is, the perception's not there, so they're, they're not here, there's five people sitting in the audience. We need, people need to understand that my kid is not, you know, my gifted child was not served properly because the gifted program was cut, which is what happened, you know, my kid's not getting this because my class size was greater, my teacher didn't pay attention to me, my grades suffered, and now I didn't get into the college I wanted. That's what parents need to hear for the long-term situation to be rectified, because without these thousands of people, we're going to sit here ten years from now, and the situation's going to be that much worse.
I would be proud of the board not putting those compliments out to parents and kids and wedging folks, and saying, if we don't get this, we're going to eliminate X, the ban, of course, because that, that is a three-sixth education for our youngsters, and it's, it's vital for them for, you know, path, post-secondary pathways to college or career, so we've, we've avoided that scene, but you're right, we're on beginning of here now, and that's what I was trying to say before, anyway, is that we're getting, we're getting more referrals to SED and other things, because they can't get the support day by day, and parents are advocating for it, and, you know, and that's how it's operationalizing, so we're trying to mitigate that, which has been a real challenge for us. So I, I just, I need to go on record saying that we have not taken that approach, we, we tried to do the playbook, paper plane, all of that, so we haven't gone down that avenue.
I'm not suggesting stoke.
No, I just.
But I think in terms of relating, general education shortfall is affecting all students, including my student.
Right now.
Because they're not getting services every student needs, not.
That's right.
Track teams getting cut and, and they're cutting, you know, the gift program.
That's right.
It should be, we're funded, we're, we don't have as many teachers as we need, so every, everybody's kid is, is suffering equally, and so then they all need to come out.
I think that's part of it.
I'm not, I think that's the approach.
That's exactly part of it, because the focus isn't on freshman sports, so you have that specific group that comes out, and it, and it's so hard to explain to people about going to Hartford and complaining about unfunded mandates, I mean, there's millions of dollars, millions of dollars in unfunded mandates, that if they, they wouldn't have to give us a dime, just get, just take that weight off of us, but how do you go out and explain to everybody in the town that they've got to get on a bus and drive up to Hartford and complain about unfunded mandates, it's not going to happen.
Well, one of the things we have to watch out for here, because I think we're, everybody, whether it's the city council, the city side or educational side, that we don't divide the community into, this is the educational group, this is the government group, we're all in the same, same bucket here, and we all, if the city has the available funds, obviously, our highest priority has always been the education and to divert funds in that direction, but when we're cut down altogether, the city, the cover's bare, there isn't any money there, we all lose, everybody loses, but not one of these things where we divide the community or divide groups within the educational system, where you have, I'm only worried about the sports, I don't care about the academic side at all, or anything like that. It's got to be united from, we did hire a lobbyist who I think helped somewhat, and it was worth the investment, so.
I would agree on that last statement, a lot, it's helped a lot.
And which way, by the way, I'm not, maybe not, that's why we're in front.
The lobbyist?
Which way?
Always helped us a lot, I think we have much more of affection to Hartford, I think even a lot of the state reps will tell you, it's a, it's a common point, Ryan's up there every day on the ground, if we need to get something done or in contact with someone, the legislators will check in with him, will push stuff through him for, you know, he'll pull our lottery numbers, for example, to testify tomorrow, so we'll get on the docket to testify, we, there's a lot of pieces, he tracks bills for us, and in reality, probably might, you know, because we don't sit here all day long and track any bills, then it's not, it's not on our purview every day.
I feel like what you're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, I, I.
I remember in the past, we did, we, I think we had a similar situation, and maybe the person wasn't.
Yeah, the city.
It's a split cost, it's fifteen thousand a side, fifteen city, fifteen board, and I think it's, I, I think it's a common point that we can all get to, both the state rep side and the school on the city side, it's a common point up there that represents us all the time, which I, I think is a good, we've got, you know.
We got us in front of.
Ben Barnes at OPM, I mean.
Where we get to sit down, like now, and tell our, our story anecdotally, which is really important for them to hear.
I think he paid the salary.
Yeah, and, and it's. Yeah, and it tells a story to each person up there all the time, so yeah, Ben Barnes, met with him, but again, the Danbury story is told repeatedly up there, and I never think it's a bad thing. And can I, one second, I just want to get the quick question.
Hi, sorry, because I'm new here, I'm a parent, I'm a second grader, I'm a speech kindergartner, so I was, I'm very concerned about the larger class sizes, obviously, as most parents are, and then I heard you talking about insurance, you're talking about health insurance.
Health insurance.
What is the average cost per teacher for health insurance? Do you know?
The average single, single plan is approximately ten thousand, and a family's about twenty-five thousand.
And is there?
District, all-in cost, not employees, but just actual, all costs.
And is there an opt-out option incentive for teachers?
No, there's not an opt-out incentive.
Because could that be like?
Well, we can't go into a full discussion if they have a quick question, but if you want to come back and ask that or write it down, and we'll be back on it.
Okay.
And that's all.
Along the lines of what Warren was saying earlier, in terms of us, you know, working together and not separating, you know, into two different groups, the education group and the government group. In past years, I've heard the comment many times from parents, that they heard from somebody on the Board of Ed or in the administration, that their budget was cut this year. And we always look at it, if it was more than last year.
It increased.
It increased.
Right.
That in and of itself pits education against the city, and I think you need to know that. We hear that quite often.
Oh, yeah, I think what happens is that.
Long information.
Right, I think they go by, these are our fixed costs, so like this year, it's going to cost, the fixed cost, nothing, and it's going to be four point seven million dollars. We're, you know, if we get two point three, it's more than last year, oh, we have to make a cut, we have to take people out, we have to, you know, when you tell somebody we got to lay you off because we got an increase, it doesn't seem like it makes sense, and not that I don't go around telling people that we got a cut, you know.
I'm talking about where people speak, and the message is, our budget got cut. And I'm an accountant, so my numbers got, when I see a number go from here to here, and it's a higher number, that's not a cut.
Right.
So I just think, again, I think it's a bad message, especially one in terms of we're trying to work together and not work against each other.
I don't think that anybody on the board actually says that. The public does, but.
No, no, I'm talking about, this is from board members and administrators.
I haven't heard anybody say that, but I have heard people say that they didn't get quite as much as that, as what we needed.
I mean, I think, I'll speak to, I don't know, this partly addressed to me, and I was the one that wrote that article in the newspaper regarding, you know, what we've been shortchanging from the city and all that, and the point across, you know, the point with that, you know, first of all, I just want to say thank you very much for coming here and, you know, allowing us to engage in this dialogue, but over the years, you know, the budget in terms of what the city, what the Board of Ed has needed, in terms of what they receive, has, has not kept pace, and, you know, if we were looking for what the state is shortchanging us, we would be proposing an increase to the city of forty-five million dollars, and clearly, we're not doing that because that's just not possible. But the point is, there was a point in time where the board of education budget as a percentage of the city budget was at a certain rate, it was roughly around fifty-five percent, and over the years, the board of education budget as a percentage of the city budget has decreased down around fifty-one percent. And so the point is that, not necessarily to attack the city, because, you know, there are other ways that the city does help us out, you know, outside the Board of Ed budget, but the point is that the city budget has been increasing, you know, the city side of the budget without education, has been increasing at a higher rate than the Board of Ed budget, and that was the point, and if, you know, if my comments were the ones that you were referring to, which, you know, that was the point that I was trying to make, and it's one of those things that, you know, our backs are against the wall, and we're really trying to look out for what's best for our students. I mean, the CGF case has been going on for fifteen years, you know, we've been advocating at the state level for more money, we're going to continue to advocate at the state level for more money, there's, there's no doubt about that, because the city's never going to be able to make us whole without, you know, some revolutionary change in the state economics and the city economics. But, you know, for right now, you know, the city needs more resources, and that's for our students now, because, you know, if we have to wait another fifteen years for the state to pony up what they need to pony up, you know, our kids are already going to have graduated by then, you know, they've already been detrimental, and we're dealing with a new wave of students coming in. So that's really the point of it, and it's not to attack the city, you know, we do need to work together, and I think, you know, Dr. Sal and the administration, before I, you know, joined the board, you know, they've been doing their part to work with the city and to accomplish those goals, and, you know, they've been sharing contracts in terms of bidding for, you know, fuel and propane for the buses and, you know, different things. The administration's been cutting a lot of costs, you know, in terms of, you know, if you look at, for example, the administration cost per pupil, you know, we're thirty percent below what the state averages, and that's because, you know, the Board of Ed has given, you know, the district directive like, hey, look, we need to keep teachers in front of our students, you know, keep, you know, class sizes down as much as possible, and so where we've made cuts, we've made cuts in support and, you know, tutors and paraprofessionals, we've made cuts in terms of, you know, the administration in the building, and, you know, it's really, it's been tough, and, you know, we really want to work with the city and to make sure and ensure that our students are getting the best education that we can give them. And, you know, to your point earlier, Mr. Lee, regarding the, you know, technology and distance learning and all that stuff, again, you know, I've participated in conferences where, you know, there are districts around the country that are rolling out this kind of stuff, and, you know, it's just, it's tough, we would love to roll out, you know, the sort of technology in our schools that they have around the country, and it's just, you know, mostly because of the state's, you know, fault, we haven't been able to do that, and, you know, we're dealing with just, you know, trying to give kids the bare minimum education, and that's, you know, that's not fair to them, and that's not fair to the parents, it's not fair to the community, because, you know, the kids that are coming through our schools are the ones that hopefully stay around Danbury and contribute to our community, and, you know, that's, that's what, I'm not trying to attack the city, and we're really trying to work with you all and to see what we can get done and help our kids.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Sal, has there been any thought, or let me first, let me ask the first question. If we're not able to give you the full funding, or the state isn't able to help us out and get the full funding, have you worked on a plan already, or has that got to take place after, after the fact?
Yeah, until we know what we're dealing with, you know, I don't want to create a turmoil in the district by making any rash statements, so I think when we understand what our parameters are and we're told what it is, then we'll start thinking about what's best for our kids and what we need to do. So from that standpoint, that's how I thought we should handle it.
This was the first year that our kids saw actual cuts, less people in the classroom. We gloves, I think twenty-five paraprofessionals in the classroom, half of our reading and math coaches, and I will, I'm going to explain this all to the appropriations committee tomorrow, it's having a real effect on our kids. I'm volunteering every day, I don't even have a kindergartner, but I'm helping the kindergartners just with basic phonics, that the paraprofessionals were giving these small group instructions to these kids, and a strong economy is, is through strong public schools, and I think we could be doing more for our kids, and Warren, I don't mean any disrespect, but I don't know if the numbers that you have with this eighty percent is actual. I was at a meeting just last night at King Street School and a presentation by the Connecticut School Finance Project, that the numbers came up to be like seventy percent, that the city was contributing.
You might be right, I can tell you exactly what the numbers are.
Okay.
But actually, Danbury, state money, as it sits now, is of the twelve, seven, three, eight, two, eight that we get in total, the state money is thirty-two hundred and eighty-four dollars per student, and the local share is eighty-eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars per student. That's the numbers I'm currently working with.
Yeah.
And the, from Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, I have the numbers as far as what the school board, the governor's asked for.
They knew numbers, you mean.
And those increases, and it actually, from our side, the grants for projects and what have you, in two thousand and nineteen, were one million, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars, and it's proposed to be zero, so we'll lose, the city will lose almost two million dollars right there.
And the board's supposed to gain, so it's a.
So it's all coming out of the same.
Bucket.
Bucket, but we're going downhill fast, and we're trying to keep the board education or the thing afloat, so, but we're taking some pretty good hits here.
Yes, well, we've taken some good hits this year too, and I think you're going to see more parents that are, come out and express their concern for the lack of basic education.
I don't, yeah, I got, I mean, we're certainly not here trying to pit us against you guys, I think it's just a matter of, we're kind of scrambling around, because we have, we have a big hole to fill, and we just don't know how we're going to do it, because, to be honest with you, maybe what Irving said, if we could get ten thousand people on a bus and head up and spend a lot of time organizing up in Hartford and maybe squeeze a few million out of them, it would make a big difference, but we just, we won't be able to fill, if we get less than what we're asking for, we won't be able to backfill any of these positions that we've lost already, and we will, we'll probably wind up losing more, which will be bad.
There's always the tolls on the highway if we have to go down.
We'll start with the tolls in Danbury, there's two to the meter park.
No, but a lot, one more if I may.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Again, and if I'm in the wrong alley here, just tell me to be right, has there been any thought to a regionalization, like Region Nine or Fifteen or wherever?
We, we've talked with local superintendents, we're in our third meeting now, about what we can regionalize regarding space and support and transportation, but not the governance part of it, just the utilization of how we can save money if we bid out together, if we have a facility, for example, that is not filled, that's contiguous to us, can we use it for providing services for low incident students in special occasion and combine ourselves? So we're looking to regionalize things like that with surrounding districts, but from a governance point of view, without saying, you know, this region ought to go to a county system, and we haven't had those, those are discussions that have to take place in Hartford.
Connecticut as a state.
We're just trying to find ways of saving money.
Connecticut as a state is definitely not, not there, unfortunately.
One of the things I will go on record to say to you, that, you know, our challenge is even reducing resources, you know, how do we move ahead? That may be not an issue for you guys, but it is for me, in terms of making sure the district's moving forward. You know, so we utilize grants to fill gaps, to extend programs, to run, you know, programs and interventions, find some different leadership positions to support that. We take our Title I money this year, we used to have six schools that were Title I, because our student population, the, that are needing fairly reduced, had risen to a district average, it exceeded the benchmark, we made every elementary school a Title I school, so they all were able to get some other resources. That was a way for us to disperse money differently. So we're trying to constantly find, and they're doing things in those schools that we could not do out of the operation budget, because the intent of Title I and some of the grants that we get, it says, you can't supplant what you get from the town, and you have to build the closing achievement gap generally, so we find ways like that. And I need to come back to the blended learning thing, and we have credit recovery at the high school the past six years, we have students that are very close to getting a credit, and we provide them online learning, they're able to go through that, you know, the classroom is one teacher supervising, they may be on fifteen, twenty courses, but they get the credit, they don't have to repeat the course, add that up, that's a lot of FTEs. So we've been doing all of those things to save money, the best, you know, and for us, that's the blended learning that we've been providing. So our challenge administrative, you know, how do we, how do we not just say, okay, you don't want to have money, so kids, you can't do this, you can't do that? We try to figure, okay, we don't have the cash, right? We need to do something, how do we get there from here? And that's, that's been our attitude, in trying to cobble things together, and not criticize the down or anyone to say that you're not giving it to us, but how do we find ways to increase what we can, give our kids resource wise?
If I may, how much of that eight million dollars is going to teachers' increases versus staffing?
Currently, eight point four is primarily all staff inside that grant, the raises inside that grant are about three hundred thousand in the Alliance grant. So in that eight point four, one of the things we didn't address in the budget, because we thought there was some increase in state funding, is what I call the compression factor inside the grant. So inside the grant, raised in health is about, about three hundred grants, again, it's eight point four million dollar staff roughly, about eight million total.
And that will be, yeah, I saw, there's some rough.
Total FTEs inside that grant right now, I want to say.
In the high school, for instance, I think I saw two.
You mean, in the new budget going forward?
Yeah.
New budget, new FTEs for high school are five FTEs, new. Yeah, five, five new.
There was two special FTEs.
Yeah, two special FTEs.
Two special FTEs.
Yeah.
I didn't.
The graduation requirements, when it had to twenty-five, we have to staff it, but we can staff it in a different way, but we're going to have to do some addition, primarily the one that we have to hire, we have to hire health teachers, I'm sorry, I guess that's a new requirement, we couldn't staff it at the current level, then we have this bet, and we have.
We have currently a hundred students that are, approximately a hundred students identified in the freshman academy as needing special education services, and we're, as of today, anticipating a hundred and thirty to matriculate in as ninth graders, so that's an increase of thirty. Typically, we keep our fees low to about twenty, you know, for your typical resource teacher at that level, a little bit smaller in the lower levels, so just to that factor to, you know, provide appropriate services for our freshmen that are identified, will need at least one FTE, and then we've created an in-district program that has offset several other district placements for our significantly disabled students, and those students have been housed for the past three years at one of our middle schools, and there are several of those students that are ready to matriculate to high school, so those students will need additional.
So you take the FT, one FTEs and the E's that we have, you know, I don't know, maybe it's a hundred and fifty, sixty thousand versus the tuition of five or six kids at two hundred and three quarters of eight dollars. So we have our own program, so we've been doing things like that to, one, it's better for our kids to be home, our own kids, but also save money, it's a good business model, it serves everyone very well, so we've been doing things like that. Busing, you've done some busing studies?
Well, we've done the busing study, we've converted our fleet to propane, and we've done a lot of those.
Well, next year, you're looking to go into three tiers, so we don't increase.
We're having a consultant review of our tiering structure now, to see if there's addition.
I think we're trying to take the inside shots about what can we do to reduce and not expand, use any money that we can towards kids and those, those kinds of activities.
Total FTEs inside the Alliance grant at eight point four, which goes towards all the kindergarten and our ELL teachers, there's eighty-two FTEs inside that grant right.
Those are new?
No, no, that's current, current teachers.
That's in the grant?
Yeah, 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 no.
Yeah, that's current.
Yeah, current, no, current.
So that's what's represented.
Yeah.
Well, you have the high school that, if just the grades progress, you're going to have thirty-five, hundred and thirty-six hundred kids, and right now, you're, you're just staffed about the maximum, so we're going to have to handle, that's going to be another nine to twelve FTEs, just to handle the core experiences that kids are going to have in the next five years, it's natural.
And the way your high school's coming online with the addition, it's going to be a trickle of FTEs, it's going to be five, you're going to add, but it's not a case of the West Side, we're going to bang, you have to have twenty-five teachers, you know, full-blown everything, so at least this way, thankfully, is an economical way to begin to build the growth into that school. That's one of the highlights.
Those buildings represent about three and a half million dollars on the debt service on the general, general budget to the city of Danbury, which is educational investment, so you've got to remember, like I said, we pick up a number of things, I know we picked up maintenance around the facilities, a lot of that, so we've picked up the city side a lot of, to take the burden off the educational side.
The bottom piece, boy, you guys, all the combined stuff that we've done with you guys has been a huge help, I mean, we'd really be in trouble without a lot of that.
Point of information, just so you can be better informed, Fred, you had alluded to it earlier, and Warren has always said this over the years, just that there's costs that are outside the budget that the city is involved with, relates to the school. And I just wonder how that calculation is done, that talks about, that puts us in last place in terms of the amount that we put towards the student. So is the, does the calculation include?
Yes.
Those additional costs that?
It does. What happens every year, we file what's called the EDO one, it's a, it's a financial report that goes to the state where that calculation is based off of. And what happens is we send a document over to the city, it's called Schedule One and Schedule Two In-Kind Services. So all your maintenance staff, all those salaries get captured in the Board of Ed budget, including any bond financing, so all those pieces get looped in to that, that twelve, twelve thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars that is your net per pupil. So it does capture those. Cause boards across, some boards have maintenance in their budgets, some don't, so that's where all that in-kind stuff gets picked up. Some schools have no in-kind from their cities, we do. So yeah, those costs do get associated over and captured. Yeah, so it is, it is inside that number.
Can I just add to that too? Cause I believe I just learned through the Connecticut School Finance Project that that particular formula will be changing. I think it's being piloted now with nine different districts.
Correct, there's an older formula that's happening this, this coming year.
But I think, I think in regards to what John is saying, that it will help, I think, you'll see more of an itemized format as opposed to things just kind of being bucketed, correct?
Yeah.
That might help with that sort of transparency.
Yeah, it takes the current, the, the budget that we present and use is detailed. The city, the, sorry, the state rolls up a lot of the numbers and the salary stuff into buckets. And the, the new report, which we're just starting to pilot now, will break that formula down deeply.
But the point being, the snow removal, the maintenance.
Yeah, all, all, all that's captured, yeah, all that's captured. Sean, Sean handling the, the folks at public buildings, so it's a percentage of their salaries that slide over our tar budget, so they're servicing our schools, all those sorts of things.
But the real number is gonna, as our enrollment grows, it keeps on getting hammered down because.
We're forty dollars less than last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, just because of that very.
Because of the.
Cause you're growing.
So we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna beat that number.
No, you're not gonna go up by two or three thousand now, I mean, per pupil. No, it's not gonna shift that. Well, that's, so you could, you could get that number quickly, but multiply, multiply two thousand times, it's eleven thousand students.
When I think in our presentation earlier in some of the public hearings we had, we were short-changed about fifty million dollars over a period of years and we were hoping to get reimbursed that.
That was a CTEF, fifty-four million dollars.
Yeah.
Right. And what they've done, they've taken the Alliance money and they've made that part of UCS money to the municipalities.
Yeah.
You know, and that was a way of just increasing ECS. And they did, they, they put it in our ECS money to the town. That's the, the way they remedied that part. There's still twenty-four million dollars short to get us to where we think we need to, to thirty million.
And, and this is the last point, in the Alliance grant, I mean, of the things that's inside that grant, like one was all-day kindergarten. Right now, today, there's what, two districts in the state that aren't, aren't an all-day K? So I mean, it's not a case of some decision the board made with those funds were, you know, afoot, blitzing. You know, I mean, all-day K now is a foundation of every school district across the state. I wanna say that there's two, I forget the exact number, but I think it's, it's that field that don't have all-day.
Well, no city.
Yeah, no, no city does not have one.
We continue looking for grants. We used to have a grant rider, but it wasn't productive. So now we, Anne, thank you Anne back there, she's been bringing money. That behind-the-scenes money you don't see in terms of supporting families and kids, which is vital for preschool kids and that's made a difference in things that we've done. There, there isn't a lot of money coming to us from organizations to pay for people, quite frankly, generally the things, programs. We need help with more than just brick and mortar or software, we need help with people, hands-on kinds of folks.
I just got curious, I know that my, my wife got a huge grant from IBM on laptops and they were more than happy to give them a slew of hundreds in their program. Do we get any free software, hardware, laptops or anything like that from me?
No, not, not generally. GE gave us a grant a while back, but it was small, it covered some stuff at the high school more for like after-school salaries, I think, or something like that. IBM's been not as giving as they were. Other districts got, you know, like IBM would kind of hang the sign on a door and be a whole computer lab, don't they, but I haven't, we haven't seen too much of that lately. Yeah, yeah, those were big. We have not seen much of that lately. You know, even, you know, some of the other, like Bowery gave a couple thousand dollars for the STEM buses a couple of years ago. And those have been, you know, they, they come in, but they're, they're very specific to just pay for specific things, they're not very, very like a broad brush, you know.
The last two years, three years, we took those, the Alliance, Michael, the Alliance money specialized bond issuance for improvement.
Oh, that was a million eight and we dumped a ton of cash into the schools. I call it not brick and mortar, but in a sense renovation and mortar. I mean, we did a lot of new turf at West Side, so the playground work and that kind of stuff.
Things that, you know, take them back to town.
Yeah.
Now we're looking at the one where we could probably purchase some hardware.
Yeah, well, actually, we're gonna pay for the tennis courts to high school, there's a half million dollars there.
How'd that grant?
We're gonna use that grant to refer high school kind of.
So that goes back to the study you brought up before. I think we find ways to work together as best we can, meaningfully, you know, and we do return money back to the town, which now has been going into our insurance grant. But bonds like this, we've been helping each other as best we can. It's just that, you know, you just aim enough money.
Yeah. I want to say. Ingersoll Automotive, Mrs. Coburn should remind me, Ingersoll Automotive has stepped up and we get about thirty-plus laptops every year from them at high school.
That's right.
They, they really, that, that's a continuing form.
And that's been for four years, so that's.
Yeah.
Nine and thirty computers they've given us, right?
Ingersoll Automotive, they donate laptops to this high school, every, every year at least thirty, all the time, every year.
We also have many teachers that are doing Donors Choose and so even though you have one or two classroom teachers that are getting five, six, seven laptops, I mean, you have easily, I would say, forty, fifty teachers over the last year or two that have been getting, you know, small amounts of technology, but you add that up over time and it, it, you know, equals numbers.
Ray Dalio has a large endowment fund, will just go on to the GoFundMe sites and just blanket buy a couple hundred grand worth of teacher resources and just pick them up.
Put in for four or five in a classroom, but it does add up over time. There's just an extra way, you know, in my department, for instance, in Special Ed, we've had things funded like sensory rooms for kids. So for kids that have needs outside the classroom, a time and space to go to calm down, cool down, those types of things, fully funded in multiple buildings. So I mean, those little things that kind of offset some of the costs, what teachers are taking their own time and kind of energy to put into those outside the school day to kind of make up for some of the things that we wouldn't be able to provide otherwise.
Special Ed, what, what does it cost to that, what's that running us now and, you know, like per pupil or?
Per pupil, per pupil or usually four times your current per pupil site, say, you know, fifty thousand students, so, you know, approximately. All places can be a hundred thousand plus, they're unanticipated, they just literally just show up. Your total sped budget is about twenty-two percent of your overall budget, I would say, I could tell you, I wanna say it's give or take. Say, I think it's about twenty-three percent last time I looked. You are, your current Special Ed budget is twenty-five million, so, I'm not quite accurate. About, about twenty-two percent or so, yeah.
Do we know how many students there were?
Yes, you have just under fifteen hundred students in special education that are receiving.
Fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred, yes. So you're currently representing just under thirteen percent of our total population, it's a large department. You know, one of the, you know, the most significant changes that I've seen, I think the best thing we've done is provided in-district programming and creating programs to keep kids in district. You know, keep them in our community, be able to educate them by our teachers and staff. Our out-of-district placements still remain low, you know, roughly forty-five currently out of those fifteen hundred students. So not a large number percentage of that population. And I can honestly say that those students, we have deemed that they need something other than what we can provide them. The, the part that has been particularly difficult is some of our DCF-placed kids, as I'm sure you're well aware, we have two group homes in Danbury and we frequently get students that are both identified as special education and usually in the guardianship of DCF that are deemed non-existence students. And when they come into our, our, you know, city, we assume the educational responsibility for them, including any of the costs associated with that. Frequently, those students have educational needs that are, you know, in out-of-district programs and they are done kind of, we find out about them throughout the school year. Sometimes there's several students across the school year, sometimes there's less, sometimes more. So those are those like unanticipated costs that we come into quite frequently and regularly in special education. And speaking of the Lavius, sorry, the Lavius piece, one of the things that has been helpful for, for me is with some of the new legislation with, with special education, the independent educational evaluations, the coalition or collaborative to pool resources, many of those things I've been able to either speak on behalf or some, you know, send in testimony to speak to those things and the specific impact that it would have on Danbury. You, you know, one of the biggest things is that excess cost in any way that additional resources could be supported to the district with those costs.
They're all from the district, Danbury, Danbury area?
All Danbury, all Danbury's.
But we get, we have, we have moved into DCF and why that come from other towns that we've won.
Well, the no, yeah, the non-existence kids are essentially students that are in the care custody of DCF. And typically speaking, they, they don't have parents or guardians, so they don't have a district of residence or a home district. Cause the district of fiscal responsibility is where the parents reside, so if DCF assumes guardianship of a kid, let's say parent rights are terminated, they don't know the location of parents. If those kids are then placed in a group home in Danbury or in a foster home in Danbury, Danbury then becomes the nexus and assumes the fiscal responsibility. Many of these students have very tragic stories and situations and things and, and the cost to educate them is, is more. And I think the difficult piece is that unanticipated piece with that. The other thing that we've seen that has, you know, impacted your special education budget is some of any time a student is placed into a youth detention facility, a mental health facility, any of those types of things, we also assume the educational responsibility for them during that time. And again, those can be very, they fluctuate across the year, they're not anticipated. And so that is something else that makes it very, very difficult in the special education budget to plan for.
See, our, our identification rate is quite, is lower than the national.
Lower than the state average.
Than the state average, and particularly for cities, so, which means that accommodations will be made in the classroom. SRBI, or there's, there's an intervention system we're required to do with students. It used to be where kids need, before you give them help, they had to be identified. Nowadays, what we're calling SRBI model, or intervention model, that has different tiers to it. The problem that we're having is that the first two tiers, if you're in my classroom, I'm gonna work with you to accommodate. But at some point, before I make that recommendation, before let's say full assessment testing or to qualify you for a much more expensive program, the kids may need, just because they, you know, they just have gaps in their learning, they need some specialized teaching and we have what we call a tier three. We don't have enough staff to do tier three. The people that we cut, that we're talking about, used to do the tier threes, and we don't realize that. And what happens is, that's what happens. If we could, you know, if we're able to fund that, then, you know, the, the kids can be integrated back into the mainstream. Totally, without being, you know, referred for Special Ed, put a label on them, just so they can get some more time with phonics and other intervention, what a specialist. We don't need to go there. But that's the unforeseen things that, that the general public doesn't see. You can't see that unless you know and you live in the schools. And that's what, why the teachers, quite frankly, shut up at the board meeting, pulling out their hair, saying, you know, you gotta help us out. You got twenty-eight, twenty-nine, I'm trying to do this, SRBI, and then when they put them to help someone, there's no one there, so what do they do? They make this Special Ed reference.
We see how this.
And now we're into a whole system of identification and programming, which is very expensive and sometimes, in my view, not the best and not appropriate for kids. They shouldn't be doing that. So that's, that's the dilemma that we're facing.
We see a significant increase in like parent referrals, even district referrals for special education services. And I think a big piece of that is that we don't have anything else to offer. So I'm a classroom teacher in third grade that has twenty-nine kids sitting in front of me and, you know, this kid needs help with phonics or with mathematics and I can't provide that. So the avenue, because we don't have those intervention services for them, is to get that service through special education, which I do share as a concern. I mean, you know, special education is appropriate for many kids, but not for all. And if we can't provide an intervention that could prevent a kid from necessarily needing service and that would be the goal through that SRBI, you know, the liability of the district, the cost of the district, all of that is increased. So while it may be an immediate savings, I think the long-term kind of impact, you look back over our special education rates over the past two years, we've increased by a full percent. That's significant. We're still below the state average, but we've increased significantly. So I just, you know, that's just a piece for advocating for my, my department.
Well, if we stay at our present staffing, that number's gonna keep increasing, I would assume.
I, I would.
If we don't bring back some paras and intervention.
I think just the natural, I think two things. I think the natural increase in our total student body, I would anticipate the special education rate to increase. But I do think the, the rate at which it increases will be more significant, the more cuts and drawbacks from the intervention services we make.
And that's why we use title money, we try to have these interventions, in fact, we have a presentation tomorrow, we're gonna read one eighty in math, it's three new programs that we've been able to, you know, reduce the, the, the grade level differences that teachers are dealing with in their classrooms. Cause kids can't read and comprehend. And we have those programs and usually we fund them through specialized grants and things of that nature. But we need to sustain that stuff. And when I go up to Hartford, that's what I talked about, we don't have sustainability. We could have it this year for your kid, but guess what? We might not have it next year. You know, and we, we guess we have French this year, but we don't, I can't have it next year. This is not right. You don't hear that kind of conversation, generally speaking, you know, you're surrounding others. It doesn't begrudge that, but they don't have to experience that. We do.
Does anybody else have?
There's a question, I was wondering how they're doing in the magnet school as far as funding and so forth and.
They're funding.
They cut us last week by eight or so, so we lost about a hundred and fifty thousand. That grant couldn't cut the last two years. So I continue, we continue to see a downward return on that grant.
And we're losing.
And we're losing kids.
Out of town kids.
Yeah, out of town kids, enrollment are coming because.
Keep their enrollment.
Their enrollments are dropping, so you've got like new town elect, I think that they, they forego a couple seats this, this last lottery, so we're seeing those numbers.
But we still get how much in total, which the taxpayers have to pay.
We still get, I haven't cut, recouped about a million seven right now on that. So it does pay for a chunk of the school. Now, that school is built for free by state money, not free, state bonding, you know. And now obviously we do give, oh, I'd say fifty-six percent of the costs are buried by the state.
What was the cop show today?
A seven point five percent in the magnet grant, approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, current year and now, literally two weeks ago, we had an email from the state. You know, good news, we were gonna cut you fifteen percent when they cut you seven and a half, so I guess.
Hope you do that.
But we have, we will continue to run into a problem if the out-of-town people don't come in, that changes, we won't get the funding.
Changes the formula.
Yeah, the formula changed.
Wasn't that magnet school supposed to handle the bubble?
Yeah.
I mean.
It was trouble, it wasn't a bubble.
Yeah, no, it was more of a, it's a much bigger bubble.
Steady bubble. With all that said, we have a great school system in a lot of ways and I believe that firmly. You wanna visit anytime, give me a buzz, we'll go and look, take a look what's going on in the classrooms. Teachers are very dedicated, the elementary, you know, what we're talking about here, they're able to hide, it's almost like bills at home for kids, right? But the folks, they're doing a great job, I, I always say that, we're very fortunate to have the, the passion that we have or the people that we have. So you're welcome to visit anytime, please do.
And to Dr. Sal's point, and the same thread, to Warren's point too, we do have a good relationship with the city and the council, I think the board does, I mean, there is always an open dialogue. I mean, myself and David work closely, the mayor, Dr. Sal, I mean, we, we do meet, so it's not a case of one side just know what's going on the other end more. I think we're fortunately collectively suffering through, through the state cuts, I will say that. And I feel like this whole, last six months, we've been in cost mitigation and cutting mode. It's just been shuffling on what's been, been cutting and leaving, so.
We try and we will continue to try. The council's educational committee, which, which I chair, again, will do the best we can, you know. Difficult times, we know that, but I don't wanna break a partnership that seems to have worked well. I know sometimes it's very tense, everybody very passionate about their, their cause, but it's, it's tough for all of us, including the taxpayers, which we all wanna protect in every way and that means provide good education for the children.
Most, most of us are in that boat. It's, it's a difficult spot to be in. You don't wanna sit here and come in and say, you know, like, I, I, my wife and I were talking, I said, go see if you can rally up a big group of people, come out there and go into the city council and scream that they wanna have their taxes increased so they can send more money to the schools. You're not gonna find a lot of those people out there.
Well, my children went through the Danbury school system, they went on to higher education and it was a good experience and we're proud of it, so.
Yep.
We have a good school, cool school system when you look around to some of the others. Some people come here to Danbury just to take advantage of the programs that are available themselves.
We do. Well, thank you so much, it's really good to see everybody come in. Well, thank you so much, really appreciate everybody coming.